All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, David Rosacker, Chris Rupert, Jorge Sotolongo, Matt Tondal, Patrick Morris, Vice Chair, and I'm Michael Pate, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanzlaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table right here in front of us. You're certainly welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases that have been recommended for layover have already been heard or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case removed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda when I read it. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. That case then will be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides have been heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. The testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We will request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating any repetitive testimony. When given testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has already been said. We will ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members, from attorneys, or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they will be made part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board, as well as to the rest of the public. And a current copy of the Opens Meeting Act is found in a white binder in this room. So we'll go ahead and start with the consent cases today. And again, if you are here for one of those cases and you'd like to have it removed from consent, please just raise your hand, and we'll remove that case. We're going to start with the approvals of the consent items that are on for approval. The first one is item number seven, Case C-1025190, C-1225191. Applicant is M.R.D.P.L.L.C. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of the Ida Grove subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. And this was laid over from our August 6, 2025 meeting. The location is southwest of 186th and Ida Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 10, Case C-821150, C-821158. Applicant is Nebraska H.B.P.A. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow indoor entertainment and outdoor entertainment in the G.I. district, along with approval of a major amendment to the large project special use permit to allow development over 10 acres in the G.I. district. This property is located within the FF, which is Flood Fringe and FW, Floodway Overlay Districts. This was laid over from our August 2024 meeting. Location is 6303 Q Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 14, Case C-325240. Applicant is Indian Creek East LLC on consent for approval. Request is approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from civic to low-density residential. The location is southeast of 192nd and Fort Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 15, Case C-1025237, C-1225214. Applicant is McGill Industrial Park LLC on consent for approval. Request is preliminary plat approval of McGill Industrial Park Replat 2, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from G.I. to G.I. and H.I. The location is north of 111th Street and Rainwood Road. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 16, Case C-1025215, C-1225216. Applicant is Indian Creek East LLC on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of Indian Creek Village, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. The location is southeast of 192nd and Fort Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 20, Case C-1025223, C-1225224. Applicant is Holy Name Housing Corporation on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of Orchard Reel Replat 18, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R535 and R6 to R5. The location is west of 40th and Franklin Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 21, Case C-1225226. Applicant is Jasper Stone 192nd and Dodge LLC on consent for approval. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of Avenue 1 Replat 7, a minor plat inside city limits. The location is northeast of 192nd and Burke Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 22, Case C-1025229, C-1225239. Applicant is Ben Harrell on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of a Bensonville Acres Replat 11, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R3 to R5. The location is 4715 North 60th Avenue. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item C-1025208. Applicant is Scott Semrad. It's on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from RA to TOD to MUR, along with the repeal of the ACI overlay district. Location is 536 and 540 South 29th Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 24, Case C-1025210. Applicant is also Scott Semrad on consent for approval. This request is rezoning from GC to TOD 2 MX, along with the repeal of the ACI overlay district. Location is 3206 Leavenworth Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 25, Case C-1025211. Applicant is Mary Ravage on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from R435 to R5, and the location is southeast of 42nd Avenue and Y Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next, item 26, Case C-1025228. Applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Omaha on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from R435 to R4. Location 5835 and 5839 North 28th Avenue. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 27, Case C-1125209. Applicant is Scott Semrad on consent for approval. Request is approval of PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment of Overlay District. Location is 3115 Pacific Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? You just want it removed? Okay, we'll read the case then after we're done with the consent, okay? Next is item 28, Case C-1125225. Applicant is Holy Name Housing Corporation on consent for approval. The request is approval of the PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location is west of 40th and Franklin Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 29, Case C-825230. Applicant is Sat Off E Recycling on consent for approval. The request is approval of special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the G.I. district. Location is 10409 I Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 30, Case C-825084. Applicant is Girls Inc. of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow recreational club in the R7 district. The location is north of Missouri Avenue and L Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 31, Case C-825213, C-1025238. The applicant is 500 Skyline LLC on consent for approval. Request is approval of a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in the CC district, along with expansion of the ACI overlay. Location is 506 North Skyline Drive. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 32, Case C-825227. Applicant, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Subashri Kuduro on consent for approval. Request is approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare general in the R4 district. The location is 17525 Redmond Avenue. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 34, Case C-1425231. Applicant is the property owner. On consent for approval. Request is approval of the vacation of a portion of State Street right-of-way from Raven Oaks Drive to Willett Street. Would anyone like to have this removed? All right, those are cases that are on consent for approval. I'll now move into the cases that are on consent for layover. We have two cases on for layover. The first one is item 6, Case C-1025151, C-1225152. The applicant is Malibu Properties LLC. It is on consent for layover. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of View 222, a minor plat outside city limits with rezoning from DR to R4 and R6. This is laid over also from our August 6, 2025 meeting. The location is southwest of 222nd Street and West Center Road. Would anyone like to have this removed? Next is item 19, Case C-1025221, C-1225222. The applicant is Black Bear Holdings LLC on consent for layover. The request is preliminary plat approval of the Preserve Second Edition, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, along with a waiver to Section 5399, sidewalks 5393, street surfacing to waive installation of curb and gutter 53910, streetscape standards to waive installation of streetlights 5382B, cul-de-sac length 5382G, street width and 5384D, lot frontage. The location of this is southwest of 222nd and I Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed? Okay, those are our two cases on for layover. So now I will go back to our cases on for approval. I've entertained a motion to approve the cases that are on consent for approval.
I motion to approve Agenda Items Number 7, 10, 14, 15, 16, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, and 34.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion for the two cases that are on consent for layover.
Motion for layover, item 6 and 19.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Dave?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, those are the cases that were on for consent for approval or layover. If you're here for one of those cases, you're free to stay, but you're also free to escape if you'd like to. Thank you for being here. All right, now we'll go back to the one case that was pulled off of the consent for approval. That was case number 27. That was item 27, which is Case C-1125209. Applicant is Scott Semrad. It's on consent for approval. The request is the approval of the PUR, Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location is 3115 Pacific Street. Is the applicant here? Are there any proponents? Are you coming up?
Hi, Terry Morrison, 3552 Farnham Street with Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates. I'm here on behalf of the owner. I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Okay, and then are there any opponents? Please, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Priscilla LaCroix. I'm the owner of the lot adjacent to the proposed build. I'm the owner of 110250 South 31st Street. My key thing with the property is that we plan to build our family home. We have been residents in Leavenworth for five years, and we purchased that plot. We plan to break ground around March. My understanding is that they plan to reduce proximity to the property line near us from 15 feet to five feet. Our biggest concern is our interest in privacy. With it potentially being five feet within our backyard line, we just have this request that it could at least be 10 feet.
Okay. That it? Thank you. Okay, are there any other opponents that wish to speak? See, and now close the public hearing. Terry, would you like to come back and address her concerns? Name and address again, please.
Terry Morrison, 3552 Farnham Street. So it's my understanding that the building itself is going to be still almost 14 feet from the property line. The reduction in the setback is for a segmental retaining wall to be within five feet of the property line. So it's not going to be a building structure that close to the property line. So it won't be encroaching as much as it sounds with the five-foot setback.
Okay. Okay. What was her name? Teresa?
Teresa? Yeah, would you come back up? My only question is, Priscilla LaCroix, representing LaCroix Family, owners of the plot adjacent. My only, my question to that would be, what is the barrier? Why, why is it not possible to do the 10 feet instead of the five feet? And if it's just a retaining wall, is there a possibility that a balcony could extend beyond that in the apartment building?
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Terry, again, name and address.
Terry Morrison, 3552 Farnham Street. With respect to the segmental wall, it's just keeping with the elevations of the property line. We're not able to make it work with the finished floor elevation where the entrance goes into the building and exits. So we have to put in a retaining wall to keep the property line elevations consistent.
Okay.
Are there any balconies on this building?
No, I don't believe there's any balconies on that side.
Doesn't look like there's anything on the drawing board.
Just one more question. Priscilla LaCroix, representing the property adjacent 1102 South 31st Street. How high is the retaining wall going to be? I don't believe that was stated on the plans.
Did you go? Again, new party, name and address.
Hi, Abigail Turner, 3552 Farnham Street. The retaining wall at its max height is going to be three feet tall, and its lowest height, two feet. And the reason why we can't necessarily shift it further to the west is because we're going to run into that property line. So without adjusting the property line, we can't shift as much anymore.
Okay, I close the public hearing. If there are any other questions, I think you guys get together and just talk about it afterwards, but now we're just going to take the item up for a vote. So Eric, do you have a?
Yeah, so I don't, I won't tell all the details as this was on consent, but 20 units as well as parking within the structure. Staff recommends approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submission of acceptable final plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, any questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the PUR Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District subject to submission of acceptable final PUR development plans prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
All right, well, now move into the administrative meeting part of our agenda, and there are five items on the administrative part of the agenda. These items, there's no opportunity for public testimony. We'll talk through the cases, but there's no opportunity for public testimony. First one is item 1, Case C-1225089. The applicant is Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates. The request is final plat approval of South Side Terrace 3, a subdivision inside city limits, properties located within an NCE overlay district. The location is southeast of 30th and T Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat is for the next phase of the choice neighborhood at the South Side Terrace. Planning Board recommended approval of the preliminary plat back in April, and City Council approved that on May 20th. The final plat is consistent with that preliminary plat, creates four lots. The project will be required to comply with NCE overlay requirements. Staff recommends approval of the final plat subject to submission of acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Are there any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to the City Council for final action.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next is item 2, Case C-1021209, C-1221210. The applicant is Westwood Solutions LLC. This request is final plat approval of the State and Highway 133 Edition, Lot 4, a subdivision outside city limits with approval of rezoning from AG to G.I. and G.I. The location is northwest of State Street and Blair High Road. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the next phase for this facility. So although it states it's Lot 4, basically it is replating all of the previous existing platted property as well as unplatted ground to expand for the next phase of this development. Just a couple items that'll be needed before proceeding to City Council confirmation regarding landscaping and tree mitigation planting, as well as noxious weed plant. So staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG and G.I. to G.I. Approval of the final plat subject to the three conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion for the approval of rezoning from AG and G.I. to G.I. Approval of the final plat subject to addressing the following three conditions prior to forwarding the request to the City Council for final action.
Second. Okay, thank you. I have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, next is item 3, Case C-1225107. The applicant is Millard Public Schools. The request is final plat approval of MPS 210 and Q Campus Replat 1, a subdivision outside city limits, properties located within an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. The location is southwest of George B. Lake Parkway and West Q Road. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, which City Council approved on June 17th. The plat would create one lot and one outlot, as well as the extension of X Street. Staff recommends approval of the final plat subject to submission of acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to the Council for final action.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next is item 4, Case C-1025139, Case, Case C-1225140. The applicant is New Street Properties. The request is final plat approval of Omaha North Stadium YMCA, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from LO to R4 and GO, along with expansion of the MCC overlay. The location is southwest of 34th Avenue and Ames Avenue. And let the record be shown that Jorge had to recuse himself from this particular agenda item. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat creates two lots, which is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, which City Council voted on July 29th. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from LO to R4 and GO, approval of the MCC overlay, and approval of the final plat subject to a final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to the City Council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Thank you. Next is item 5, Case C-1020045, C-1220046. The applicant is Woodsonia North Streams LLC. The request is final plat approval of North Streams, Lot 322, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to MU. Location is northeast of 202nd Avenue and N Street. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the third phase of North Streams. It just includes one single mixed-use lot, which would be for multifamily housing, as well as the plating of 202nd right-of-way. Once approved, this will activate the mixed-use zoning. So staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to MU, subject to a minor amendment, and then approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
A motion, the approval of the rezoning from AG to MU, subject to submission of an acceptable minor amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations, and approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the administrative part of our agenda, and we'll now move into the public hearing. So these are our items that will be, testimony permitted. The first one is item number eight. So we're going to look at number eight, nine, and 13 together, same applicant, same case, The first one is item number eight. So we're gonna look at number eight, nine, and 13 together, same applicant, same case, not case numbers, but same applicant. So the first one is case eight, C1025194, C1225195. The applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. Request is preliminary and final plat approval of 26th and Corby Plat, a minor plat inside city limits, along with expansion of the ACI overlay and approval of a waiver to Section 5384A, lot depth. This was laid over from our August 6, 2025 meeting. The location is southeast of 26th and Corby Streets. Item nine is case 11, C25196. Applicant is also Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. Request is approval of the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. This was also laid over from our August 6, 2025 meeting. Location is also southeast of 26th and Corby Streets. And item 13 is KC 325234. The applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, and this request is approval of the 26th and Corby TIF redevelopment project plan. Location southeast of 26th and Corby Streets. So those are the three cases. Well, first here, number eight, so if there are any proponents that wish to speak, just please.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Los. I'm with TD2, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions I can.
Scott, any questions? Okay, are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and I'm here primarily to address the applicant's tax increment financing application. Looking for assistance of the TIF project. I may give you a brief description of the project as well here. It's located on the block that is southeast of 26th and Corby. One of the blocks immediately east of the city's fleet maintenance facility. The parcels are all presently vacant. Habitat for Humanity will construct 27 for-sale affordable housing units. These will be factory-built, prefabricated housing units. Mostly configured in sets of four units, like, excuse me, four-town home unit. Type structure is a site plan. This is a Habitat project. They're the owner. The total investment in the neighborhood is going to be a little over $7 million. The TIF support they have requested is $874,779. It's been reviewed. The project's been reviewed by the city's TIF committee and approved by them. It meets the required criteria of our TIF program. It's appropriate land use for the area. We appreciate affordable housing that we need in the community, and we ask for your support.
Okay, thank you Don. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Please come forward.
Dan Brewer. I'm with Habitat for Humanity, 1229 Millwork Avenue. I'm here to answer any questions.
Are you a proponent or opponent?
I'm a proponent.
You're a proponent, okay, for the record. Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? So you're gonna now close the public hearing. Scott, would you come back up for, I have just a quick question for you. These are all gonna be...
Scott Los, 10836, G, 108...
Thank you.
I'm giving you my old home address. 10836 Old Mill Road.
Thank you. These are all for purchase units, right?
Correct.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I see that in here. So roughly about $230,000?
Correct.
Units on the...
Dan and others probably answered the numbers better, but yes, correct.
Right around there.
Some a little less, some a little more.
Sure, okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you. All right, close the public hearing. Eric, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, so there's three agenda items. One is related to the plat, including the ACI overlay, and there's one minor waiver of a Chapter 53 provision. And then there's also a PUR, which is Agenda Item Nine, and then the tax increment financing, which is Agenda Item 13. So I will read each one separately if you do a motion and vote. So for Agenda Item Eight, staff recommends approval of a waiver to Section 5384A, lot depth. Approval of the expansion of the ACI overlay district. Approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the five conditions. Approval of the final plat, subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Thank you Eric. Okay, on item eight, do we have any questions? If not, that will entertain a motion.
For the approval of a waiver to Section 5384A, lot depth. Approval of the expansion of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the following five conditions in the report. And approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Thank you.
For Agenda Item Nine, which is the PUR, staff recommends approval of the PUR, subject to submission of final plans prior to City Council.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? If not, do I have a motion? On number nine.
Motion to approve the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district, subject to submitting acceptable final PUR development plans prior to Council.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Thank you.
And for Agenda Item 13, I would just reiterate kind of what Don Seaton had already said, but there's a great need for affordable housing. Habitat for Humanity is always a great partner with the city in utilizing this, you know, underutilized ground. So for the tax increment financing, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you Eric. Any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Nice project. All right. We now move to the regular agenda. First item is number 11, KC 325212. The applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is approval of the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. Location is City of Omaha and a three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Good afternoon.
Yeah, Ron, can you turn on, they have a PowerPoint, I believe. I don't know if, Dan, if it's on the desktop or you have a stick.
All right, thank you for your time, Planning Board. Dan Seater, Assistant Director, Parks and Recreation. We're here today seeking approval for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. It is a 20-year roadmap for the Parks and Rec Department, the first of its kind. It'll also become a component of the city's comprehensive plan. I'll be introducing Teresa Jackson of Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn was selected through an RFP process. Then we had an interview committee consisting of a representative from the mayor's office, planning department, our Parks and Recreation Office, as well as a member of our park board. There was a scoring system and then an in-person interview, and through that process, we selected Barry Dunn, who is a national consulting firm specializing in parks and recreation. I'm gonna turn the time over to Teresa, let her get into the nitty-gritty, but I'll be here to answer questions as well, and we'll set this up. Introduce Teresa Jackson of Barry Dunn. Hopefully this all kicks in. So we have about a 10-minute presentation. Real quick slideshow. Questions and answers.
Thank you, Dan. Good afternoon.
We'll need your name and address, Teresa.
Oh, yes, of course. Teresa Jackson with Barry Dunn, 2886 Riverside Drive. Thank you for the wonderful introduction. As Dan mentioned, this, can you hear me okay on the mic? Okay, wonderful. This was a 14-month process, and I'm pleased to be here today to present the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan to the board. This will ultimately roll up into the city's comprehensive plan. Today, I'm gonna focus primarily on the plan components and some of our key findings and priorities. So a key aspect of the planning effort from the onset was community engagement. As Dan mentioned, this is the first plan of its type for the department, and we wanted to make sure this was an inclusive process that really engaged all corners of the community. So we used a mixed method of engagement over the course of five months. We had a project website that received over 8,000 visits, 1,000 contributions. We also had a statistical survey that was conducted by ETC Institute, and we had nearly 1,000 individuals complete the survey. And through that survey, we divided the city up into sub-areas so that we can ensure we had representation from all areas of the city that reflected the demographics of that area. And we were able to receive those numbers with less than a 5% margin of error on the survey without weighting the data. In addition to the survey, we also had in-person engagement. We were out in the community at approximately 15 different events or drop-in opportunities, trying to really meet people where they are.
Teresa, could you put that mic maybe a little bit closer to you?
Yeah, I feel like I can't hear myself, so it's not picking up. I'll come a little closer here. There we go. This one?
There you go.
There we go, okay. So as we set out on engagement, the department had some very specific desires through engagement. They, of course, wanted to build some awareness, not only about the plan, but also about the department, to really generate some excitement about the plan and the various services that the department provides. And so a brand for the planning effort was developed. Omaha Outdoors: Opportunity Awaits. And again, that was to generate some excitement and also brand recognition as we were out in the community conducting engagement. In addition to that, they wanted to collect feedback that really focused on needs and priorities of the community. They wanted to promote inclusivity, so ensuring we were engaging diverse populations and underrepresented groups. As I mentioned, that was the getting out into the community and meeting people where they're at. They also wanted to strengthen trust, so they wanted clear transparency and communication throughout the process. We leveraged both the various social media outlets that the department has, as well as the department website, to ensure we were updating the community all along the course of the 14-month planning effort. And then lastly, to guide decision-making. And what you'll notice today is really what we learned through engagement was very well-supported through the various analysis work that we did, which led to our priority areas and our goals. So what were some of those reoccurring themes we heard through community engagement? So first, we heard there's a very strong desire to maintain and improve existing facilities, so this constant theme of taking care of what we have. We also heard there's a desire to expand some very specific program areas, such as summer camps, fitness, and our nature-based offering. Also a desire for some more equitable distribution of services on the recreation side, ensuring that programs are available to all throughout the community. Also recognition that there's some gaps in staffing, so addressing staffing and maintenance challenges. And last, improving trail connectivity and year-round access. So through the survey, we learned that trails are a very important asset to the community, and we want to improve that connectivity. And so part of this plan did include a trail connectivity plan. So just a couple of quick examples specifically from the survey. We provided a list of areas of emphasis over the next five years. And what you can see is that maintenance clearly rose to the top as being where the city should put its top priority towards in the future. So first was park, maintenance of parks, followed by security of parks, and then maintenance of our trails. Similar to that survey question, we said, so if you had $100 to spend, your tax dollars at work, how would you allocate those dollars? And again, that taking care of what we have. We have $35 that's being attributed to addressing deferred maintenance in the system. And then just right behind that, at $27, was updating and renovating existing facilities and pools. So the analysis work that we conducted was first, we did an operations assessment where we looked at funding, we looked at staffing, and we also did some benchmarking against national standards, as well as similar-sized departments. We also did a recreation assessment where we were focused on the distribution of programs, how those programs were being marketed, how they were being filled, and looking at participation trends. We also took a look at the park inventory, and we evaluated the parks specifically. There's over 200 in the system. And then we did a level of service analysis to understand how those parks are distributed across the system and what access looks like and where gaps exist. Then we did a specific maintenance assessment where we took a look at current maintenance practice, and we developed specific modes of maintenance to be used into the future so that parks are consistently maintained throughout the system. And then lastly, the trail connectivity plan, we identified 156 potential trail segments that would fill in gaps, and we prioritized the top 20. So the framework of the study, because of the size of Omaha, we wanted to divide it into sub-areas so we could really understand what the needs are of specific areas of the city. So we relied on maintenance districts. There's six maintenance districts. That's what you see outlined in black. And then in the colors, you see the council districts that they overlay with. So each maintenance district covers two to three of the council districts. So the conditions assessment, I wanted to go a little bit deeper into that aspect because it was a very key piece of the planning effort. So first, we went on site, and there was five specific amenities that were graded. So picnic shelters, restrooms, playgrounds, splash pads, and sports courts were the five amenities that we know that the community has a strong desire for and provide a lot of value. So we went out and we graded all of those across the system. Then we also scored the individual parks, looking at accessibility, character, so things that want to keep you in the park and provide comfort, maintenance and landscaping. We also looked at connectivity, so the access to the parks. And then lastly, usability, is the park equipped with the appropriate amenities? And from there, we could identify if a park was good, fair, or poor in how it performs. And so what you see here on the slide is specific to Maintenance District Nine. So at a glance, the green is those parks that are performing well, good. Fair is yellow, and poor is red. So at a glance, we can see that performance. We can also see access to those parks and identify any gaps. So what were some of our key findings and priorities? So relative to key findings, it's gonna sound very similar to what we heard through our engagement, and again, the analysis supported that. So organizational capacity is stretched. Staffing especially and maintenance is insufficient. There's a heavy reliance presently on part-time employees, which really affects the continuity and reliability of maintenance. And this was validated through the benchmarking that we did with spending towards park acres, as well as per capita spending across the community. Uneven recreation services, so we have some very popular programs that fill very, very quickly and have substantial waitlists, and we have other programs that aren't presently as successful, that can be repositioned over time. We also have some underserved areas, so those summer camps that are very popular, they aren't located across the city in an equitable way. Access and quality vary, so most residents are near a park. There are very few gaps in the system. I think we only identified four. But the quality of the parks really vary, and so the plan really helps to identify those parks that need attention. Trail connectivity gaps, I mentioned earlier, we were able to identify 156 segments, along with many partners that contributed to that, and then rank those priority trail segments. And then last, maintenance. Maintenance is a major concern. We met with many different athletic groups and trails users to really understand what the challenges are there, and then our park assessments supported what we were hearing through engagement. So from there, we built out five key priorities, and then we established goals under each key priority and very specific action items. So I won't go into the action items today, but I want to give you a sense of the overall priorities as we think 20 years into the future. This is that 10,000-foot view of the system and what the department should focus on first and foremost. So priority one, build organizational capacity. So really start to build out that workforce and systems, look at partnerships, ways to improve service and delivery in the long term. Two priority, the second priority, secure sustainable funding. So through our analysis and our comparison against other agencies, we do find some substantial funding, excuse me, some shortfalls. And so we have suggested either a park, or both, excuse me, I should say, a park district assessment, but separate from that, also looking at funds to better fund some capital improvements that are needed in the system. Third, expand access to underserved areas. So across the planning, or across the planning effort, we did find gaps, some in recreation, some in parks. And so we've clearly identified where those gaps are and developed some very specific action items to fill those gaps over time. Priority four, take care of existing assets first. So a number of goals and action items really specific to renovation and reinvestment versus building new. So building up that existing system that you presently have in place. And then priority five, expand recreation access and participation. So we've identified some specific programs, such as those summer camps that I've referenced, that people have a high desire for. And so how can we build those up and provide them in an equitable way across the system? And so how can we build those up and provide them in an equitable way across the system? And so just to give you a sense again, so we've got those five priority areas, and then there was 15 goals developed underneath those priority areas to give the department direction. And then we have those specific action items that they can begin working on year after year as they develop their budgets. And not only try to grow service, but start reinvesting into the services and the facilities that they presently have. Thank you. What questions can I answer for the group today?
We had quite a conversation at pre-meeting, but I have a couple of questions and maybe Dan, if you could come up to and answer. So you indicated staffing is kind of insufficient at this point. Is that a result of not being able to find people, or is it because you can't hire the people?
I think it might be a little bit of a mix. Back in, get closer here, I'm going to say back in the day, but we used to have lines of seasonal staff, not just for pools, but for parks. We would almost be able to select who we want to hire. Now, we just don't see those number of applications, especially on the park side. On the recreation side, lifeguards, we're back up to probably our staffing levels that we expect for lifeguarding, but it's more on the maintenance side where we're finding more issues. A lot of it's when we do our research, or we even ask if we put out an offer, sometimes it's just the pay, sometimes it's the condition where finding people want to go work indoors, or they just want full-time. The high school kid that works out in our parks, it's tough to find nowadays. And so we have been working with HR on different ways to start to recruit, how to recruit staff. Again, that might lead to, do we try to diversify from part-time and create some more FTE full-time positions to be able to keep those staff longer-term, turn it into a career for them? We did implement even the Step Up Program. We had good success this year with three or four individuals from the Step Up Program that the city administers. That's something else we want to encourage in the next few years as well. So I think it's just a mix of, I hate to say it, when I was a kid, that's how I got into Parks and Rec, I was a lifeguard and kind of fell into this field. Not that much older than everybody, but you know, we just don't see the number of applications. Our applications have gone down and I think it's just tougher to recruit for those positions.
So if you had a number of people apply, can you hire them?
Yes.
So you're not limited to budget right now?
We, the positions are there, yes, it would affect the budget, and that's what we're looking at. We do need more funding in the budget. From what I understand through our process, going back to about 2008 or '09, that's where our department saw some cuts and some money taken out, and that's where some staff was cut. The staff wasn't filled in. We continued to bring in some parks and properties throughout the years, and then we did not staff to those levels to maintain those parks. I think where some of that, when we try to trace things back, I think that's where it came from.
That's kind of what I thought. So I'm looking at your benchmark comparisons here. We're the second lowest spending city in your benchmark array that you've got, woefully different than a lot of your other comparative cities here. This is my editorial comment for the day, basically. This is an important feature for citizens of Omaha, Parks and Recs. It's something people ask for, it's something people want. And if we don't invest sufficient, I'm not blaming you for this, don't get me wrong, it's just my opinion, if we don't invest sufficient resources in this area, they're going to be rundown, they're not going to be maintained properly, people aren't going to attend, you know, they just don't want to go anymore, but yet they want that, they need that. So this is my opinion, I think the city ought to really focus on trying to provide some sort of a funding formula that will adequately fund parks and recs to the level that you need it to be, particularly for maintenance, because if you don't maintain the assets, people aren't going to want to go. And safety's a part of that, too. You need to make sure it's a safe environment for people. And then as I also mentioned in the pre-meeting, I think there's also other resources that you can, other than taxpayers, there's other resources that maybe you can tap into with regards to foundations or nonprofits that would probably really be interested in funding programs for the Parks and Recs Department as well. So again, I'm looking at the array of your benchmark study here and was pretty disappointed to see the numbers, to be quite honest with you. It was pretty telling to me. So that's just my opinion on that, just want to mention that.
Thank you.
Well, one other question, too. So with regards to the programming for Parks and Recs, how do we let the citizens know what's available?
We use as much marketing and social media as possible and in working in the areas where our community centers are located. We do work with partners as well. You know, we don't have to provide all of the programming, per se, from staff. We have great partners that can provide the programming, they might even do it better than us. So it's working with those partners as well and getting it out to the community. We try to use every avenue. We've grown a lot in our social media and marketing presence over the past year, year and a half. We have a full-time marketing person now that's really trying to get all of our information out, whether it's our programming, it's anything with an improvement in a park, we're trying to show the residents what we're doing in their communities, as well as when we get ready to recruit and staff and hire. So I think we're doing that and we're consistently looking at what's working for others, just to get the word out. What we face is really just capacity. Our camps, we can only put so many kids in the camps, there's only so much space, and that's where we, that's really our bread and butter. That's what I think people who grew up in Omaha really attribute the programming to, is those camp programs and the aquatics. But there are other areas we can start to expand, and that's what we're looking at. Mandan has opened up some areas where we've been able to open up some more camp programs out at Mandan Park with the improvements out there, and we're looking at other opportunities as well to reach out. Levi Carter will be another opportunity for us when that facility is built, to really have a presence up there in North Omaha and deliver some specific programming to those residents directly in that area. And that's something we're working on right now, getting all of that ready to go. I mean, that's going to be another unique opportunity for us.
Yeah. And to get back to recruiting, too, so one last question. Do you do any kind of job fairs or anything to try and get people to come to?
We do, yeah. We attend job fairs. Our Recreation Department does a great job getting out there, our parks piggybacks with them as well. And so, yes, those are things we talk about all the time and try to improve upon. We've even worked with HR where we would go out to a job fair, we conduct a job fair, and we have the paperwork ready so they can fill out their application. We have an HR person there to get them going through the systems, we can get them set up to do their drug testing and get them all online, especially when we're working with those high school kids. So we tell them what they need to bring, do a quick interview with them, make sure their credentials are ready, and so we're improving that process as well.
Do you go to the schools?
We do go to some schools, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that'd be a good place.
We can do more.
And Metro?
What's that?
And Metro Community College, do you go there?
I'm sorry.
Metro Community College, do you go there, too?
Metro is, I think those are some areas we can outreach, I'll be honest, I'm not sure if we went into Metro. But again, those are some of the trades and things we need to look at, and those are all on our list of how we can improve and work with HR. It was a discussion we actually just had yesterday, we were talking about the trades. We have one plumber, we could use up to four. You know, we do a lot of training for the private sector, we find tree trimmers come in and we might lose them to the private sector. And so it's what can we do to retain them? What can we do to get those trades? There's a lot of trades we could definitely work on.
You bet, okay, thank you. Thank you both. Any other questions? Okay. Do we have any other proponents who wish to speak on this? Are there any opponents? Okay, Seahan, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, you got anything to add?
Yeah, you know, just to reiterate, Dan had mentioned before the presentation how this will be, become a component in the new We Make Omaha Comprehensive Plan. So our team has worked with Parks and Dan and everyone else, and so that'll be a very seamless transition when that is finalized, end of 2026. So staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you again, and thank you for your support.
Yes.
Those words mean a lot.
Yes, you're welcome, and good luck. Yeah, doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next is item 12, KC 325232, C10 25233. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan, do include recently added land within the plan boundary, along with Douglas County zoning to City of Omaha zoning, conversion for expanded three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, the location is City of Omaha, and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Yeah, Eric England Planning Department. Yeah, so with the recent annexation of some areas that was approved by City Council in late July, that annexation did include Flanagan Lake, which resulted in a fairly large expansion of our extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is up to three miles from our city limits line. So as a result of that, the ETJ or the extraterritorial jurisdiction was automatically expanded once that annexation became effective. This effort is a follow-up to officially designate the properties that are now within the ETJ for their future land use designation, as well as a zoning conversion from their prior Douglas County zoning into City of Omaha zoning. So whenever you have a zoning conversion, we look at the properties, we look at Douglas County zoning, what the regulations are, and try to fit it with the most comparable City of Omaha designation. The vast majority of the properties will be zoned AG and DR within City of Omaha's regulations, and then there are some areas R2, LC, and CC. With the feature land use map designation, the vast majority is low-density residential, but there are some designated mixed-use nodes in some few areas of civic. So I can answer any questions as we see if there's anybody to testify.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to speak on this? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seahan, I will close the public hearing then. Do you have a recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Thank you, Eric. All right, we have a motion, or we have a recommendation, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, next is item 17, KC 1025217, C12 25218. The applicant is Choice Homes. The request is preliminary plat approval of Serenity Estates Townhomes, subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from DR to DR and R5. Location is 2240 Skyline Drive. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Chad Bumpstead, Choice Homes, 2550 South 224th Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska. We are here today to talk to you guys about trying to develop this piece of property for 12 townhomes on this piece of property. These would be high-scale, upper-end townhomes. Price point on these would probably start at about $800,000 and go up from there. We're working with TD2 on this project as well, too, as the engineers. So if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay.
Hey, Chad.
You're welcome. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to speak on this? Seahan, are there any opponents that wish to speak?
Opponents?
Opponents, please come forward. Hello.
My name is Mark Dock, and I'm at 2248 Skyline Drive. We are approximately right behind 2240 Skyline Drive, which is the location that they would like to go from DR to DR5. Our biggest concern are two parts. There is an easement directly to the south of that lot, Lot 4 of Sundown Acres. What it appears is that Choice Homes is changing the access portal from this easement. By the way, let me back up another step. We own the land that this easement is on. And what this easement actually does is it allows ingress and egress from Skyline Drive directly up to the original home that was there at 2240 Skyline Drive. Well, that house has now been removed. What they want to do is they want to change this to these townhomes. We have significant concerns about that because, number one, you'll forgive me, I just got this yesterday, so it's very rude. I believe I could just lift this up, and hopefully it will come on and you can see it, maybe not.
Push it up a little higher.
A little higher?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
And then on the top, you can zoom in and out.
Hey, guess what? I can't operate this stuff. Again, like I said, very rudimentary. You'll notice the south side, down at the bottom middle, you'll see the word easement. What this easement essentially does is, like I said, we own it. It's a driveway. It's roughly 10 feet by about 325 feet, long east to west. If you look at the middle, right here, what they've done is this used to be an access portal to the original home right about here. Well, what they've done is they've moved it to the center of where this access drive is going to be, and it's supposed to be 25 feet by 17 feet, connecting to a 10-foot-wide drive. I don't quite understand how Choice Homes or TD2 can manage the access for these townhomes, or I was just told by the Planning Department, they're actually not townhomes, they're going to be single residences, is what they're going to be. So with that being said, how is that going to be used? And I have not had an opportunity to communicate with Choice Homes or TD2 to get better clarification of how can we manage this as homeowners? Because we also own Lot 1, which is 2210 Skyline Drive. This is actually five lots, two acres for each lot. We own lots 1 and 5. There is another homeowner that owns lots 2 and 3. It's our understanding that all four lots and the two owners just received this information recently. So what I would like to ask is if the board would consider us having an opportunity to work with TD2 and Choice Homes to solve some solutions, especially with the easement. There's also a retaining wall that's supposed to be going up over on this side of the property line. Well, the easement specifically states that there is not supposed to be anything preventing ingress and egress from that drive to Lot 4. By the way, this is also known as Lot 4 through Sundown Acres. Lot 3, 2, and 1, and then Lot 5 is back over here to include this drive here. So going back to my point, I would hate to have us go through all this without at least Choice Homes and TD2 working with us to hopefully find some solutions to the concerns at least we have with only that particular lot, as well as the easement that's there, too. And that's pretty much, there's some other concerns, but that's our primary concern for now.
Just to clarify, your lots point to the?
Where your holdings are.
Okay, our lot goes from right here, it's 10 feet, all the way back to here, and then this part here goes all the way to the river. Matter of fact, Lot 5 continues all the way further to the north, all the way back to the river.
Right here.
And by the way, that access portal is our only access from Skyline Drive going to the back. And if we end up having this location, if it is redesignated as a DR5, and we have that many people having access, that could create, in our humble opinion, some very serious access problems.
So sorry, I'm sorry. You don't have access from 2210 to get back there?
No, absolutely not.
Why?
Serious erosion. Back in 2000, and that's another thing, when you're looking back here, there is some serious erosion that occurred in 2019 that's still occurring today. And there's another one I have that shows they want to put a retaining wall on the west side of Lot 4. Well, there's a cliff back there. And that cliff, I'd like to know how they're going to get a retaining wall where the cliff, which means they're going to have to build that up. And if they build that up, that means they're going to have to encringe on Lot 5 to build it up to fill in parts of Lot 4. And again, I just got this information yesterday, so I'm not as prepared as I would have liked to have been, but that's the situation we're currently in. And that's pretty much it. So to answer your question, yes, it's the only access to Lot 5, to the backside.
How'd you get the information?
I just got it from Choice Homes yesterday. They had indicated they had sent it to my attorney and to us several months ago. I talked to my attorney, he checked his records, no receipt. I checked mine, I have no receipt. We just don't have anything, and like I said, I just got it yesterday.
Did any of your neighbors get anything?
We found out from my wife's dentist... We found out from my wife's dentist that the Prairies got information, but they are within the 300-feet plateau. There's another thing I'd like to point out. If they did send out information to the 2248 Skyline Drive, there is no mailbox there. There is no way for information to be received, because the Lot 1 and Lot 5 are kind of interjoined together. So, the Lot 1, which is a 2210 Skyline Drive, we would get mail there, obviously, but we got no communications whatsoever for the 2248 Skyline Drive to notify us of anything that was occurring.
Okay. Obviously, you know, this board is, thinks communication is vitally important with the neighbors when, on anything like this. So, you know, you bring this up, and I think we all would probably agree that any future communication, future communication needs to take place. Right? This is preliminary plat at this point, so it's not final plat yet. So, it'll have to come back to us, but I'm going to bring the applicant back up here just to answer some of those questions that you raised, but thank you for coming up.
Thanks, Marvin.
Name and address, please, again.
Again, Chad Bumstead, Choice Homes, 2550 South 224th Street. I'm not proposing to remove the easement. I'm not proposing to change the easement. The road and the access is still there, as far as I understand. It was my understanding that the city wanted to have the access point off the cul-de-sac, not us. I'm not planning on changing that. Also, Marvin was talking about a retaining wall. I'm not planning on building a retaining wall. I don't know where any of that information came from. I did send information to them. I have documentation of that. We also did a community meeting, reach out. We did that, had a lot of positive feedback from that.
When was that, Chad?
That was done, TD2 was present. I believe that was about two weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken. I don't...
Who was invited to those meetings?
Everybody within that 300-foot radius was invited, and then other people, we also sent it over to the HOA at the Prairies as well, too. I did reach out to Marvin on, I think, August 8th or 9th. I don't, I have documentation of that, telling him that I'm his neighbor. I live literally 25 feet from this, so I have his concerns as well. I don't want to cause any concerns with the easement. I don't want any concerns with erosion. That's why I want to try to manage this and build this. I'm not planning on building a retaining wall that he's talking about. I don't know what that is. But we had a lot, we had a very good turnout at the community meeting. So, I'm not planning on changing the easement. I'm not planning on building a retaining wall.
Do you know why the neighbors to the south wouldn't have gotten any kind of notice or...
There's technically no house to the south. Marvin owns that piece of property down there to the south. That's below this erosion area he's talking about, that's down on the riverside, the river area.
On the west?
To the west, yes, sir. It's an undeveloped lot. My personal house is adjacent to that property as well, too. So, Marvin and I have had conversations in the past about, hey, can I remove a tree? It blew over in the wind, et cetera. So, I'm not trying to be a bad neighbor. That's why I sent him the documentation, I think, on August 8th or 9th regarding it, to reach out to him as a neighbor. So, again, I'm to help, hopefully appease his concern. I'm not planning on changing anything with the easement. It's there. I don't think the city's planning on changing anything with the easement. The city does, though, want an access point off the cul-de-sac for that, for his benefit, is my opinion. I mean, that's my, yeah, I guess that's my opinion, so. But to hopefully help him, or maybe he understands more, I'm not planning on changing the easement. I'm not planning on doing anything with that, and I would love to work with him. I don't have an issue with that at all.
All right. I think you ought to get together, obviously, and sit down and talk through some of the issues, and you can, I think you can resolve, sounds like you can resolve.
Sure. I think, too, do I need to get up?
Yeah, come on up and just, again, name and address.
Again, Marv Dokken, 2248 Skyline Drive. The easement would probably be settled, what's the, if those townhomes are built, to me, that easement is completely irrelevant. We don't need to get access from Lot 4 or 2240 Skyline Drive. We don't need it. We could get access directly from Skyline Drive without having to go all the way around. So, if the easement can be settled between us, where they relinquish concern with that easement, because the other issue I have, too, is Lot 4 or 2240 Skyline Drive, they're responsible, per the easement, for maintenance, upkeeps, no removal, and everything else that's required. Will they continue to keep providing that continued service that Hugh, the previous owner, had when he was at the home before it was torn down? And secondly, what I'm trying to understand is that with the two owners of four of the five lots, I was hoping that maybe we could have some say-so as to the development of a DR, which I believe is one acre or more. You'll forgive me, I'm trying to learn this, too, as I go. Where DR5 is where they can put anything up there that they want, whether it be apartments, condos, whatever. We like to also try to keep it the way it is, where it's just under the DR, where it's at least an acre or more, because all the properties to the north, the owners of Lot 2 and 3, 2-point-plus acres, Lot 1, 1.6 acres, our neighbor to the north has three lots there that are 2-plus acres or more. Matter of fact, there's, and then there's another one that's almost 2 and 1/2 acres. That would really diminish the overall characteristics of that Sundown Acres. And then also, again, just a point, to see it named Serenity Estate Townhomes, when it's actually Sundown Acres is what Lot 4 is, that's just a little petty on my part.
All right, so...
And that's, I said enough on that part.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did I close the public hearing? I don't think it...
Did they have any response or anything?
The opponents? Yeah. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak on this? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, this is William Bierman, 10250 Regency Circle, Suite 300. I'm with Panzing Hogan Ernst &amp; Bouger Law Firm. I'm here today representing Ms. Heidi Donner. Ms. Donner owns the property that's immediately to the north of the subject property. We did submit a written opposition to this item, so I hope to make sure that that's a part of the record for today.
We got it.
I won't simply repeat everything in our written opposition, but I would ask every member of this board to consider our written opposition. In summary, Ms. Donner is just very concerned about the density of this project. Subdividing a current large lot into 12 separate lots is a serious and material change to the neighborhood. We would echo a lot of what the previous opponent said in terms of really changing the character of the neighborhood here. And similar to what you've heard before, Ms. Donner was not really engaged with, prior to this, she wasn't invited to that neighborhood meeting. She's had to learn a lot of this on the fly. Our first time hearing about this project was the 300-foot notice that we received from the planning department, and not anything we received from Choice Homes. So, with that, we would ask that this board make a determination to deny the requests that are before it, and I'm happy to answer any questions about Ms. Donner's opposition while I'm here.
Okay. Thank you, William.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Good afternoon, Cassie Paven, 14606 Branch Street, representing the owner at 22255 Oak Ridge Lane. Not to relitigate everything you've already heard, it's a lot of the similar issues. There is a concern regarding the density and the zoning classification going from DR to R5. If the development truly is single-family homes rather than townhomes, you know, there might be a difference. I think that there's just a question on density. Property owner, while they are outside of the 300-feet radius, if you will, they received notice late last week, which is why the concern is late. So, happy to answer any other questions, but just concerned about the density.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Cassie, real quick, you said 2258 Oak Ridge?
22255 Oak Ridge Lane.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to the north.
All right, thank you.
And really, part of the concern is creating a leapfrog zoning from R5 to DR to R1.
What was that last, what was that?
What was that?
What, that last comment you made?
Really, part of the concern is a leapfrog zoning. Leap, L-E-A-P, frog.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, any other opponents? See, Anand, I'll close the public hearing. Chad, you want to come back up and, if you have any response to those?
Yes, again, Chad Bumstead, Choice Homes, 2550 South 224th Street. Again, I'm literally a neighbor just to the south. I'm closer to this project. These are going to be individual structures, 1,700 to 1,800 square foot on the main floor. We just labeled them as a townhome. Again, high-end, $800,000-plus is the starting point for it. We're trying to improve the piece of property. Again, I live right next door to it as well, too. So, I'm just trying to make it so it's a nice piece of property that's beautiful for everybody. I'm not trying to ruin a neighborhood or anything of that nature, I'm trying to improve it. So, I guess that's all I have right now. So, you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chad?
Do you know how to get in touch with all of the, like, when you guys leave, how to get in contact with everybody?
We tried to reach out to Heidi Donner. We did actually mail her information, inviting her to the meeting. The information that was mailed to her was returned to us, so we did try to reach out to her, and I can provide that if you guys want. I haven't had any other communication with her. When we originally worked with the person who owns the property right now to build a single-family structure on there, when we were in the process of working with the city to demolish the house that was on there, she was very upset about that. She didn't want us to come onto her property and stuff, which we didn't. We didn't come on there. She came out and put streamers up and stuff. We're not trying to cause problems. We're trying to work together to resolve any questions they have or any issues they have. So, as far as the other person that was just here, I don't know for sure who they're representing. I don't know that person, someone to the north. But Marvin and I are, I mean, literally neighbors, and we've met and talked about issues and things in the past, and we've got those resolved, so.
I would just suggest making sure you get contact information from everybody on the way out and...
Sure.
You know, not, I don't know how everybody's going to vote, but this is only a preliminary plat, so you will have to come back to us for the final, and so it'd be good to...
No problem.
Obviously, there's some questions.
Yes, thank you.
So, just a real quick question, why did you include townhomes in the name of the, why didn't you just name it just estates?
Well, because we developed Serenity Estates, which is right next door to it, and we just figured townhomes sounded better.
Okay, so there's already Serenity Estates.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's just to the south.
Did you develop that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, we developed that, and I live in there as well, too. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to take this piece of property and try to develop it, make it something better. The owner of the property now has no intention of building on it. He did originally. He bought an existing house. So, right now, if we don't do anything, the ground's going to sit there and become overgrown with weeds and stuff of that nature, which I don't want as a neighbor. So, I'm trying to take advantage, not take advantage, but try to help it and develop it and build something there that would be nice for everybody else.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Eric, has some things to unpack there?
Yeah, so, you know, with the plat and the proposal, we're not changing anything with the existing easement in place, so I, obviously, you know, the development would have a new cul-de-sac off of Skyline Drive, and so they would not be utilizing, you know, the current driveway, which is in place now. So, I just wanted to point that out. City thinks it's a good idea to have that access easement on the south, if in the future, you know, I don't, there's a lot of great change, obviously, with Marvin's property there, and I think it was Lot 5, he said, you know, it's right on the ridge line, there's a bunch of fall, I don't know, you know, I don't know if there's the ability for a home or two back there. It's, you know, basically, the city is, thinks it's a good idea to set that up in place if that were to occur, but there are not any immediate impacts to the existing easements from the city's perspective. So, I don't know if you have any questions. There's not a lot of specifics in here. There will be sidewalks required, both along Skyline Drive as well as the cul-de-sac, along with some of the other standard preliminary plat comments. The area is designated low-density residential. R5 does fit within low-density residential and is compliant with the master plan. Yes, there is some other zoning around that maybe is lower intensity, but there is also R4. There's kind of a wide range between R1 and R5 in the area, so, but it is master plan compliant as far as the zoning designation. They're not seeking any lot-size waivers or anything like that. So, staff does have a recommendation of approval for the rezoning from DR to DR and R5, and then approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 13 conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from DR to DR and R5. Motion to approve the preliminary plat subject to the following 13 conditions in the report.
Okay. Great, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
No.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I vote yes. And obviously, I suggested keep communicating with everybody, if you can. I think there's common ground there, certainly. I think you can resolve any issues that you've got out there, but I think the project is good, so, so moving forward. So, I'm a yes.
Approved, six to one.
Thank you. All right. Next is item 18, KC 10-25219, C 12-25220. The applicant is Jerry Palmer Homes, Inc. The request is preliminary plat approval of Ginger Creek, lots 4 through 27, lots B through H, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from DR to DR, R4 and R6. Portions of the property are located within the flood fringe, FF, and FW floodway overlay districts. The location is south of 165th and Pinney Streets. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Coster, 10836 Old Mill Road.
Andrew, one second. Yep, Scott, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Andrew Coster, 10836 Old Mill Road, from TD2, civil engineers for the project. This is a preliminary plat that was previously approved about 10 years ago. This is largely consistent with what was previously approved. There will be a single multifamily lot on the north side of the creek that runs to the middle of the property, and then 23 single-family lots on the south side of the prop, south side of the creek. And I'm available for any questions, if you have them.
Why did it take so long?
Just the market changed, and he's, with the recent flood map changes, the property improved.
It did?
Yes.
That's good reason. Okay, are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? See, Anand, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so, obviously, there's some case history, some previous approvals, and some extension of timelines, but, you know, this varies a little bit, because you do have the proposed multifamily on the northeastern portion, which is within the quarter-mile unlimited residential density along West Maple Road, so that is master plan compliant. Other than that, you know, we are making connections. There's, I think, about three or four existing street stubs, and those have always been intended so, to connect, and so that's a good thing to connect those missing pieces, and think the development works well around a pretty large drainage way.
Yeah.
So, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DR to DR, R4 and R6, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 17 conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you ask for proponents.
Okay, I'll reopen. You can come forward.
Okay, I apologize, I just, I didn't hear you ask that question.
Okay. Good timing, before the vote.
Good afternoon, my name's Richard C. I live at 16541 Locust Street. That's Lot 1 of Shadow Glen North. It's a... It's adjacent on the south side of Locust, Locust Street, adjacent to the west side of the portion of the ground that's proposed for twenty-three lots. I have a couple of questions and some comments. First of all, at the end of Locust Street, adjacent to the property, there's an earthen berm at the end of the existing Locust Street that directs rainwater and snow runoff into a rock drainage way that runs into the Palmer property. And that property is covered densely with vegetation, trees, and so on, that acts as a sponge for the runoff water that comes off of Locust Street, as it is. As proposed, Locust Street would be opened up, there would be no, no further berm to slow the runoff coming down Locust Street. And there is quite a slope that drops down from the existing Locust Street down to the flood plain. And with the scraping of that vegetation off of all of that twenty-three lot area, there would be nothing to hold the water that's coming down that slope. My question is, would there be water retention ponds or underground storage systems to alleviate direct flow of water, floodwater potentially, into the north channel of the Papio Creek? Also, not described on the plat in any way, shape, or form, is a line of trees that runs along the west border of that west section, also runs along the, the south border. Runs anywhere from twenty to thirty feet wide. It's grown up in a substantial amount of mature walnut trees, elm trees, a variety of other mixed trees, a lot of overgrowth or undergrowth in there, and it's created quite an environmental situation or its own little ecosystem. There are dozens of species of birds that live, nest, and, and roost in those trees, and all varieties of birds and growth, or birds and wildlife. There's a small herd of deer that also beds down in those tree lines that run along the, those borders. Those deer have been there for many, many years, as I've heard from adjacent neighbors. We've lived there for almost three years now, and we see the deer constantly in that area. They have used that Palmer property as access to the drainage area that sits to the south of Shadow Ridge, or of, of Shadow Glen North. And it's a drainage collection area that the NRD, the city, and the SID have put in there to stop all of the runoff that's coming from the west of one hundred and sixty-eighth Street. There's a drainage pond in there and a substantial overgrowth of, of trees and shrubs and, and all kinds of flowers and plants and so forth. Anyway, the deer use that area as a birthing area. It's become a nursery of sorts for the deer herd that lives there. We've seen dozens of deer come out of there, young fawns, just born, and they come back year after year because they identify with that area as being safe and a, and a place to grow up, and then they run back through the Palmer property to get around, along to the other undeveloped areas. What I would like to know is, has a developer created any plan for mitigation of all that ecosystem that's going to be lost if it's cleared out? And, and has there been any environmental impact study done on the development of that property? I see a flood problem, I see an environmental and habitat loss to the property, and I think it's an extreme shame if, if all of that habitat is lost to development for only twenty-three lots. Well, some of you know me as a commercial real estate appraiser for over thirty years, and I just, I don't understand the economic feasibility of that project. Creating a SID, the expense that goes through that, the developers' costs that would be associated with the grading and so on, before the expense would go to the SID, and it just doesn't seem economically feasible. I don't know all of his numbers, obviously, but it, it just doesn't make sense for twenty-three lots. I'm not against development, but I, I would like to see development done right, and I don't think this plan that they've put forth so far is right. I would make a suggestion or a request, and that is, the developer could save a whole lot of money, a whole lot of time, and a whole lot of anguish from the neighbors at the loss of this habitat if he would put it into a conservation easement. The tax credits that are available for conservation easements would potentially more than offset any money that he might make out of selling twenty-three residential lots. So, I thank you for your attention to my comments and questions, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I closed the public hearing. Are you an opponent?
Yeah.
Yeah, please come forward then.
Mick Anderson, 2907 North Hundred and Sixty-Fifth Avenue. And we back up to that area that they are looking at developing, and, and I would a hundred percent agree with the habitat issues that have developed there. It's, it's pretty amazing, and, you know, we continue to talk about developing green space, and every time you build something green space, we, we have the green space, it's natural habitat right there. And, you know, it doesn't cost anything to build it right there. I understand we're talking a handful of homes, but we have a lot of areas that don't have near the habitat that the gentleman just described there that we see every day. And, and I would agree, where, where does all those, where does that go? We keep pushing and pushing, that smaller and smaller, and then we come back and say, you're going to build a building, but you gotta, you gotta put some green space in there. That's not natural habitat. And I, I don't think anyone's probably went out there and really looked at that, what, what has developed there. And, and I would like you to take that into consideration. Maybe you saw that report this week that came out with larger cities that are reducing the natural habitat within their city. The number of rabies goes up in the wildlife, and, and that includes also pets and animals and other things that we have. And did anybody see that test, or that survey that went, that study? No, okay. So, you might look at that because it is, it is a fact that as we squeeze those smaller and smaller, we, we do have those concerns out there. And, and it's a shame that, you know, we, we take that away from kids, grandkids, and people that have an opportunity to, you know, look at that habitat without driving out of state to do that, when it's, when it's fairly local. So, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mick. All right, any other opponents? All right. You want to come back up, please, and name an address again and just address some of those issues that were raised?
Andrew Coster, 10836 Old Mill Road. So, I'll address the first comment about the water coming down Locust Road, or Locust Street. Okay, so, this is the dead-end Locust Road, street that he mentioned. There is quite a hill there that runs down to the east, where we proposed a detention basin or stormwater quality basin here on the east. Over
Maybe zoom, zoom out a little, too.
How about that?
There you go.
Okay. So, the dead end of Locust is right here, and so we're gonna, we're gonna direct stormwater down curbed roads to the storm sewer down here in the very north, very east side here, to a stormwater basin that is right here that would discharge into the creek. So, that should alleviate any water problems here that, that's currently in this location. Next thing was tree mitigation. I know that one of our conditions from planning was that we provide a tree mitigation plan and wetland sanitation study.
Were you able to do the zoom, or do we do the zoom over there?
Thought it was auto-zooming, sorry. Okay. Should I go again?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, so I know that one of the conditions for the approval was that we provide a tree mitigation and wetland study as part of that approval, and we will submit that with final plat, where we would survey the, the trees on site and mitigate for any trees that are removed for this development. The conservation easement, I'm not familiar with, we could look into that, but I, I would have to find out more information about that to, to comment on it. But that's, I can answer any other questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so there are a few things there to go through. Eric, what do you have for us?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have too much to add. Andrew did mention that the recommendation report does talk about finalized tree canopy analysis and mitigation plan if necessary with the final plat, as well as, as well as a wetlands analysis. However, it does appear that, you know, there's requirements for the creek to be within the three to one plus fifty or to confine the areas of the floodway, whichever is greater. So, that'll be a requirement to make sure that outlot is, is sized appropriately. I don't believe there would be any wetlands outside of that, but those are two environmental components that we would need, those finalized documentations with smittle of the final plat. Outside of that, you know, I understand the comments about the habitat and, you know, but, you know, on, on one hand, this, you know, is an area that's been proposed for development over the course of fifteen, twenty years with different applications, and, and obviously, there had been some delays, and, and they chose not to move forward until this time. And so, you know, I know there's a, a large prairie ground that is not too far away. Of course, you don't, you know, you always want to be cognizant of that, but there aren't any specific codes or regulations that the city has as far as displacement of, of animal or animal species. So.
Like, this isn't like a protected area or anything like that?
No, no.
As opposed to down at one hundred and sixty-eighth and Blondo?
No, it's not, yep. Yep.
I think it's worthy of note that the type of thing that, that both of you are talking about is something that's more pertinent to master plan of a, of a city. If, if it should be determined that we want to set aside a, an area for natural habitat and stuff like that. But that's, that isn't a part of our, of our master plan, and so our job here is to look at applications that come in for the development of, of a piece of property to see if it's master plan compliant. And then we, we do the, the evaluation based on that. Not a global issue of where are the deer going to live. That's just not in the purview of what we do, so.
Correct, yes. I don't have anything else to add unless you have questions. I did state the recommendation report, I'll, I'll read it again. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DR to DR, R4 and R6, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seventeen conditions in the report.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Want to read it out?
Okay. What Eric said. Approval of the rezon, motion to approve the rezoning.
From DR to DR, R4 and R6, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the eight conditions listed.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Oh, my gosh, there's more on the next page.
Two pages.
Yep, sorry, there we go. Subject to the seventeen conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris? Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. This is preliminary plat, I'll have to come back for the final plat, obviously, too, so the communication's open. All right. Last one is item thirty-three, case C7-25207. The applicant is Michael L. Kruger. The request is approval of the conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the R1 district. The location is 20780 Timberline Drive, Timber Lane Drive. We hear from the applicant, please.
Michael Kruger, 20780 Timber Lane Drive.
Okay.
I'm here to answer any questions?
Just tell us what your plan is with this, please.
So, the plan is to tear down an existing two-car garage that is separate from the house and replace it with basically a barn dominium. My parents are now in their early eighties and once owned this house about four years ago, and I bought it from them, and they are regretting leaving. They miss the area.
Is the garage detached?
They want to come back.
Is the garage detached?
It is.
Detached garage?
Yeah. They're missing the area and they want to come back, so this is our way of making that happen, so.
And how big will it be?
I believe the total square footage is twenty-eight hundred, sorry.
Right around, I think, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Sorry, it was a little smaller, that's right.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Any other proponents wish to speak? Any opponents?
Good afternoon, Kathleen Foster, 2637 South Hundred and Fifty-Eighth Plaza.
What was your name again?
Suite 110, Kathleen Foster. I'm an attorney with Peterson and Foster Law, and I'm here on behalf of the Skyline Ranches Property Owners Association. This came across my desk very late last week. From what I have learned since then is that the, the proposed structure here is essentially like a single-family residence. The communication, we haven't received anything from Mr. Kruger. From what I have been provided, the contractor, which I believe is Valley Construction, sent a request to the Skyline Ranches, somebody on the, the board, and put a request to take down the detached garage and construct a single-family residence. There is already a home on this lot, and the, the board denied that request, and that was in June. And there was no contact from Mr. Kruger himself, and there has been, I think that three-hundred-foot radius notification was received by one of the neighbors and then forwarded to a board member. But I'm here to request that at a minimum this be laid over, so we have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Kruger. I have not had an opportunity to talk to him. I'm hoping to connect with him after this meeting today. But the lots in Skyline Ranches are for single-family residences. There's not, the, the covenants are very clear that they're for single-family homes, not for a single-family home and a separate single family home that is detached, and essentially, they're taking away the garage. It's not an addition to the garage, it's not an addition to the house. It is a, it's a single-family home. So, if a vote is required today, I'd ask that it be denied, but at, at a minimum, if it could be laid over, I'd like an opportunity to talk to Mr. Kruger, and I believe the, the Homers Association would, board would like that opportunity as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Any other opponents? See a none of closed public hearing. Michael, you want to come back up and maybe address any of the concerns that Kathleen had? And again, name an address for the record, please.
Michael Kruger, 20780 Timber Lane Drive. She is correct, our, my contractor did submit it. We were told that it was a no. I did contact my real estate attorney. I asked him to investigate the matter, and his exact words to me were, "It belongs to the zoning department." So, that is where I took, where we took it next, so.
Did you have a neighborhood meeting?
I did not.
Would you?
Sure, I'll talk. I went around, talked to three or four of my neighbors over the last week, so.
The board here historically, I've been on the board for seven years, and usually, when any sort of impact like this to the neighborhood, we just, we prefer to have an, an open dialogue with neighbors, even though it's been required. It's just, and you, you wouldn't know. I mean, this is the first time you've probably ever been down here, so. You know, given that this is a conditional use permit request, and all CUPs end here, and that there wasn't a neighborhood meeting, I would propose that, but but I'm not going to, you know, see what the rest of the Board wants to do.
Communication's important, just keep the lines of communication open. Kathleen said she's more than willing to sit down and discuss with us.
Question for you. Does the, does the existing residents have a garage?
It does, two-car garage attached.
And then this is a detached garage?
This would be a detached, which is already, like I said, there's a two-car detached garage there already. It's basically replacing that slightly bigger footprint that's moving into the middle of the, not moving out towards the lot lines, moving in, so.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, Eric?
Yeah, so. Yeah, I think we're good. Yeah, so, obviously with, the ADU code is, has been in place for about a year and a half. Of course, there are certain zoning districts that require conditional use permits and others that are permitted outright. I do think it's important to, to briefly mention and discuss about neighborhood covenants. The city is not a party to neighborhood covenants. When we have applications such as this, we do not actively diligently look into whatever neighborhood covenants there may be. So, whenever we receive an application, in this case, an ADU, we apply our rules and regulations, but I, but I should caution that if there are valid neighborhood covenants in place that would prohibit this type of structure or residence, that, you know, while we process it and we have a recommendation based on our city codes and regulations, there could be some concern there from, you know, just a, a private matter that, you know, if, if an HOA or, or something, if this ended up going through the legal proceedings, you know, I am aware that ADUs, just, this is an issue around the country, that sometimes neighborhood covenants do prohibit them, and despite what our zoning code says, that may take precedence in, in a legal matter, but that's not involving the city in that exercise. So, I do just want to, to point that out. We would encourage, you know, all parties meet and, and get together. Obviously, we do have a recommendation for approval, but, you know, if, if the Board wishes to lay over to allow those further conversations, that, that's acceptable to the city. You know, I don't know if there's different types of form that perhaps the neighborhood would be acceptable to. ADUs can be detached, they can be attached, they can be internal units, so there's not just one catch-all that has to be done. So, it still requires the conditional use permit. I'm not trying to change any plans. I don't know what the covenants say. I don't know what's on record, and that's not for me to say, but just trying to provide a little conversation when hopefully these parties meet, so. We have the recommendation for approval, subject to the three conditions in the report, but obviously, we're not opposed to a layover for additional meetings if that's what the, the Board wishes.
Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, do you have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
Motion to layover? Second. Well, I'm motion to layover. I want to make sure that the applicant meets with the Neighborhood Association and, yeah. And just keep in mind that if the meeting happens like tomorrow and this comes back in a month, you will not get a notice for a meeting again if it happens within a month.
And, and, and the, I think it's important to, to say that the layover is not necessarily because we're against the project, but it's allow the parties to continue to communicate, okay? I don't think, I think that's important to note in this, okay? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Okay, thank you. All right, so please get together and hope to see you again soon. Okay, thanks. All right, that's all of our items on the agenda. I'll need a motion to approve the minute, pre-minute, pre-meeting minutes and the minutes from the August sixth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
I'm motion to approve the pre-meeting and meeting minutes for the August sixth.
August sixth.
Any more meeting?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert? Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Epstein.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero?
Do I motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondal? Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero?
Great.